Commissioner McLaughlin, can you, um, I just want to make sure I have you listed as the, under the right phone number.
He's 4208, oh eight, or two oh eight.
Okay, so, um, great, okay, so, all the commissioners have done their stuff for, um, Commissioner Nguyen, so that Commissioner Nguyen is not here, um, participants, Gray, William, and Joe.
Anybody here, Cricket?
Commissioner Nguyen, are you online?
Vince is still here. Hey Vince, I got a question, I had a question for you, Sarah there?
Yes, I'm here.
She's probably getting everything ready.
I'm here.
Let me ask you one thing, um, why is this being, why is this being called this adjourned special meeting of April 27th?
Mark, can you hear me?
It's not a regular meeting, I saw her email back, it's a regular meeting, title on this script is all it was.
Alright, that's, that's, I just wanted to make sure, because that's what it said in my notes.
She sent you a new script a little bit ago, did you get it?
Oh.
She fixed it and sent the, sent the new one out.
They should be able to hear you fine, Sarah.
Mark, can you hear me, Mark?
I can tell you what time, 4:37?
Yeah, let me see.
They should be able to hear you on this YouTube.
Chair McLaughlin, can you hear me?
Sent you a new script at 4:39.
They haven't gone live with.
If they can, if they can hear me?
Did you get emails back again now?
We, we're getting them, yeah, that's, it has been working, there's no.
4:39.
And if your mic is muted here.
Okay, so we can go live, um, I just need to ask him though if he's ready, because that's how we, but before, they were able to hear me.
Yeah.
That's weird, because before, we could all hear each other, even before it was going live, but, um, I just need to make sure that he's ready to start, and then we can. Commissioner, um, Chair McLaughlin, can you hear me? This is Sarah Bernal. No one can hear me.
Unmuted.
I guess the script from 40.
Yeah, you should.
Four.
Chair, Chair McLaughlin?
Well, they were hearing, earlier through Melanie's talk talk, right?
Yeah, 4:39, that I, I said she corrected, yeah, I have the corrected one here too, I can forward it to you real fast.
Um, just, just, the only change that she made was the adjusted special, that's okay.
Yeah, she said she.
Chair McLaughlin?
Regular meeting, I think it was 27th to order, yeah.
No one can hear us. Ask Melanie.
The time is adjourned.
Right, here, right. Can you tell them we're just having technical difficulties, because they can hear you.
Oh, no, no big deal.
Chair McLaughlin?
Yes?
You can hear me, okay, we, we, uh, we were having a little bit of technical difficulties, I was trying to, um, speak for the last couple minutes, but, we are ready to begin if you are, and, um, yes, that is correct, the only change on the script that I resent was, um, changing to, from adjourned special meeting to regular meeting.
That's, that's fine, that's fine, I'm good with that.
Okay, so you let us know when you're ready, and then when you say, okay, we'll go ahead and go live.
You have to be unmuted.
I'm ready to go, so, if we're ready to go, and, um.
Okay, so we are going. We are going live now.
Okay, um, I would like to call this meeting of the Planning Commission of April 27th, 2020, to order, uh, because we have the pledge allegiance, and, uh, I'll just start off by saying, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God. Liberty and justice for all, thank you. Madam Secretary, would you please call Will?
Yes, Commissioner Kano. Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Garcia?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Nguyen.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, okay, Commissioner Garcia, I have her present, Commissioner Nguyen. Commissioner Fan.
Present.
Commissioner Rivera. Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Here.
Chair McLaughlin.
Here.
Chair, you have quorum.
Okay, so what I hear, what I heard was we have six, six commissioners, Commissioner Nguyen is not in attendance.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I will now, uh, ask the commission secretary to describe the way the public can access this virtual meeting.
Thank you. This meeting is being livestreamed via YouTube at www.youtube.com/cityofsantaanna-video/live, and to our website, www.santa-anna.org/CC/city-meetings. While the meeting is in progress, the public may provide a comment by phone. To comment by phone, please dial 1-669-900-9128. Enter meeting ID 315965149, followed by the pound sign. When prompted for a participant, participant ID, just enter pound. When the item that you would like to comment on is being discussed, please dial star nine. When the comment period is opened, I will call on you by the last three numbers listed on the caller ID. When you are called on, please state your name, your position on the matter, and your comment. You will have three minutes, I will alert you when your time is up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to public comments on non-agenda items. Madam Secretary, does anyone wish to speak on non-agenda items?
If you would like to make a comment on a non-agenda item, please dial star nine now. I'll wait a couple seconds. No one has indicated that they would like to comment on a non-agenda item.
Thank you. Hearing that there's no one to comment, uh, on the non-agenda items with regards to public comments, we will close public comments at this point in time, and move on to the consent calendar. Uh, moving on to the consent calendar, we have three items, A, B, and C. First item we have is, I, I would like the motion to approve the minutes from February 24th.
As most so.
And that's Cynthia?
Yes.
And the second, Commissioner Rivera, second? Okay, Rivera, second? Alright, so, um, can we, can we, uh, take a vote, roll call vote, please?
Yes. Roll call vote, Commissioner Kano?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia? Commissioner Garcia?
She's aye, she said aye.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Nguyen is not on the line, Commissioner Fan?
Um, I've spoken to the city attorney, and because I have recused myself from the one Broadway Plaza item during both meetings, I will abstain from the minutes here too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera?
Aye.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Aye.
And Chair McLaughlin?
Aye.
Motion approved by a majority vote, with Commissioner Fan abstaining, and Commissioner Nguyen absent.
Right, okay, and, Kevin, a motion to approve in a second for the, uh, minutes from the March 23rd meeting.
Commissioner Rivera, go ahead and make the motion.
Okay, so Felix is making a motion, do we have a second?
Leo, second.
Okay, Contreras Leo is second. Madam Secretary, could we take a roll, please?
Yes, um, Commissioner Kano?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen is absent, uh, Commissioner Fan?
For the above stated reasons, I will abstain.
Thank you, and Commissioner Rivera?
Aye.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Aye.
And Chair McLaughlin?
Aye.
Motion passes by majority vote with Commissioner Fan abstaining and Commissioner Nguyen absent.
Okay, thank you, and now we'll take a roll, uh, I'd like to have a motion to approve the absence of Commissioner Ken Nguyen.
I'll make a motion to approve Commissioner Kano.
I don't, okay, thank you. Second?
Leo, second.
Leo, second, alright, thank you, roll call, please, Madam Secretary.
Yes, Commissioner Kano?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Nguyen is absent, Commissioner Fan?
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera?
Aye.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Aye.
And Chair McLaughlin?
Aye.
Motion passes by majority vote with Commissioner Nguyen absent.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. At this time, we will move on to the business calendar, I just want to state a few facts. Um, first of all, the formal action of the planning commission shall become effective after the 10-day appeal period unless the city council holds a public hearing on the matter. Then the formal action will become effective on the day following the hearing and decision by the city council. An appeal from the decision or requirement of the planning commission must be filed with the clerk of the council, and a copy sent to the planning department within 10 days of the date of the commission's action. The appeal may be made by any interested party, individual, or group. We'll now cover the public hearing protocols. I will now review a process of public hearing so that everyone knows what to expect. Staff will provide a presentation and answer questions from the commission. The public hearing will then be open, the applicant will be given an opportunity to speak, limited to 15 minutes. Members of the public will be given the opportunity to comment, limited to three minutes. The applicant will be given approximately, uh, opportunity to respond to the comments made by the public, limited to five minutes. And the public hearing will then be closed, discussion will be returned to the commission for formal a, action taken to approve, conditionally approved, deny, or continue review of the application. Please consider the following suggestions when organizing your comments, please state your name and address, uh, state whether or not you support or oppose or are neutral to the project. Your statement should be, should include pertinent facts with your, with, within your knowledge, avoid gossip, emotion, rep, and repetition, a clear and concise and non-repetitive argument is most effective. Having understood that, we'll move on, and we'll start with our first item. This is the time and place to consider item number one, conditional use permit, number 2020-08, for the project located at 1900 East 17th Street. Uh, before we go on, please note the decision on this matter is final unless appealed within 10 calendar days. Uh, before we begin, do any of the commissioners have anything they wish to disclose on this, with regards to this matter? Please state your name and what you, if you have to disclose anything.
Mister Chair, this is Tim Ty, um, I just want to share that Commissioner Nguyen is actually on the line, uh, and he has been a part of the meeting, we're having difficulty getting him unmuted, so, um, I just want to share with you that he's actually on the line with me.
That's, that's fine, that's good, thank you, appreciate the heads up on that, and we, we can adjust, uh, from there. Alright, um, so, at this point in time, staff, are you ready to present item number one?
Yes, good evening, Commissioner and Chairman. This application was filed by Will Kazima with Smartlink, representing AT&amp;T, who is requesting approval of conditional use permit number 2020-08, to allow the construction of a 60-foot-high merge, major wireless communications facility disguised as a monopine at 1900 A 17th Street. As part of the application, the applicant will also be conducting site improvements, such as constructing a new trash enclosure, repaving and restructuring the parking lot, and refreshing the existing landscaping. The image to the left is the site plan of the subject site, the property is located on the south side of 17th Street, between Cabrillo Park Drive and Williams Street, and is surrounded by commercial and office uses to the north, east, and west, and a surface parking lot to the south. The proposed wireless communication facility and auxiliary equipment will be located adjacent to the existing two-story building on the site, and is highlighted by the dash square on the site plan. The image to the right is a photo simulation of the proposed monopine that was designed to be compatible with nearby pine trees. The project will improve coverage to the community by reducing gaps in the cellular coverage as provided as part of, um, exhibit seven of the staff report showing the proposed, um, gap coverages that will be, um, covered by this proposed new major wireless facility. In addition, the proposed project will be in compliance with FCC and FAA regulations, and will also be in compliance with all of the city's regulations that pertain to this particular project, and will not have any potential negative impacts to the nearby residents, and will also have enhanced onsite improvements. With that, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve conditional use permit number 2020-8 as conditioned. That concludes staff presentations, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Jerry, um, does the commission have any questions of staff at this point in time, and if you, if you do, please just identify who you are, and then your question.
Um, this is Commissioner Kano.
Okay.
Um, so, I'm just wanting more information about the last, um, coverage signal map that we have on the agenda. I'm not going to pretend I understand the green and the purple shaded areas, so I wanted to see maybe you can help me understand a bit more about the 75 DBMs indoor signals and all of those things.
Jerry, is that something you can answer, or is that something that the applicant might be able to answer?
The applicant, um, Chairman, may be better, um, explain the, the photo or the propagation maps, but more or less, um, the green area is shown in exhibit seven, is basically the area that the proposed major wireless facility will be covering. Um, as you could see on, um, page 1-39, that is the current configuration, and there's a lot of yellow area surrounding the proposed, um, site, which indicates a coverage, um, that's fairly low. On page 140, now with the introduction of the new self-site, you could see that the green area is being expanded, which is the area that the proposed, um, wireless facility will be able to cover.
Thank you so much, that's like a before and after picture, um, thank you for the clarification.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Kano. Anybody else have any other questions, or Jerry?
Um, Mister Chairman, this is Commissioner Ken Nguyen, I have, I guess, learned typical difficulty for the last 15 minutes, I finally get in, because it was provided the wrong participant ID number.
That's fine, we're glad to, we're glad to have you on board. Thank you. Do you have a, do you have a question of Jerry with regards to this particular item that we're speaking about right now?
No, I don't, thank you, Mister Chairman.
Okay. Anyone else at this point in time have a question of the commission, of Jerry? Hearing none, what I'd like to do is move on and, and say, uh, thank you, Jerry, appreciate that, um, have, Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
We have not.
Okay. At this point in time, we'll now open for public hearing, and does the applicant have, uh, is the applicant available, does he have anything, he or she have anything to say at this moment?
Hello? Can anyone? Hi, my name's Will Kazimi, on behalf of AT&amp;T. Um, I just wanted to say, um, thank you for having us here, and, um, I did prepare a presentation, uh, that Jerry took care of it already for us, that he did a, a well job on explaining the propagation map here, and I'm here to be answering questions that yous may have. Again, thank you.
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have any questions of the applicant at this point in time?
Um, so, Mr. Commissioner Kano, so maybe just following up a little bit more on the standalone site of, uh, number 1-40 and 1-41, the proposed macro site, um, I see one, two, three different pictures. I understand the 39, the four yards before and after, but what is the 1-41 in regards to?
Um, everyone, I'm assuming you guys are looking at the propagation map, that, uh, LT covers standalone, titled standalone site, C L O zero two three nine nine, correct?
Yes.
That's just basically, it's like a more of an overview of, like, uh, show you guys what standalone that site will be, um, in conjunction with, there is no other, if the other sites around it are all there, so you see how it's, it's green? That's where our goal is to, um, that's where our goal is with these antennas, to shoot and get that area covered. Um, as you can see in the beginning, uh, what Jerry explained on coverage before, um, you can see right now is we have a gap in coverage, meaning, uh, coverage is diminished, uh, data service is limited, um, so there's been a lot of trouble some going on there, and then, with that goal is to basically close that gap, uh, as you can see on the after, uh, slide. Hopefully, that answered your question.
Uh, yes, and I have one last question, um, how, was the community involved in this discussion, uh, with their, um, um, neighborhood meetings?
Uh, not aware of that, uh, from the planning sample, but we did work, we did work with the planning department extensively to, uh, meet development standards and meet all the criteria for City of Santa Ana, and I'm pretty sure on those two packets went out as well.
I, I think, uh, actually, actually, to answer your question, I also think that it was noted in the package that the, there was not a neighborhood association that close to this location. Uh, but there were two, there were two neighborhoods that were identified, and both of them had, the planning did reach out to them.
Chairman, just, Chairman, that is correct. To clarify, we did contact the Representative Meredith Parkway Neighborhood Association.
Yeah, I think it was Republic Homes, and what was the other one?
That's the only neighborhood association within this particular property that was contacted.
Right. So I think there was.
Was everything within one mile? I mean, uh, so was everything just within, within one mile of the proposed location? That's what I'm understanding.
Commissioner Kano, in terms of public notification, we notify fi, uh, residents and owners within 500 feet of the subject property.
Sorry, I couldn't really hear that.
Okay, it's, what he, what he said was notification by mail of all property owners and occupants within 500 feet of the project, was done on April 20th, April 2nd, 2020. There was also a newspaper posting, and it also says the representatives of Meredith Parkway Neighborhood Association were contacted to identify any areas of concern with the project. At the time of the report, no issues were concerned, uh, no issues of concern were raised regarding the project. So, the closest neighborhood was Meredith Parkway?
That is correct, Chairman.
Thank you for the clarification, she said on the map, on the map is, um, the central location for signals seems to be between Santa Clara and 17th Street, that's why I was wondering about that, but thank you for clarifying.
Okay. Alright, Will, do you have anything else to say at this point in time?
Uh, no, that's it, again, thank you for, uh, the planning department, the city for working with us on this project, and, um, I'm here to answer any questions.
Uh, thank you for any, thank you for your comments, um, Madam Secretary, uh, have we received any written, uh, have we, has, have we, have, do we have any applicant, do we have any individuals that would like to participate in the public hearing?
Uh, members of the public, if you'd like to speak on this item, please dial star nine now, I'll wait a few seconds to see if anyone presses star nine. No one has indicated their desire to speak on this matter, Chair.
Okay, thank you, um, hearing none, uh, what we'll do is we're gonna, we're gonna close the public hearing at this point in time, and we're gonna bring it back to the commission for a, for comments and, uh, a motion. Does anyone, does anyone in the commission have any comments with regards to this item?
This is Commissioner Fan, I have a comment. Um, first, I'd just like to thank applicants for, um, and city staff for bringing this forward, um, you know, our city is notorious for having, uh, difficulty accessing a lot of wifi and, um, the network, and of course, now, the fact that we're all staying at home has really become truly more important than ever, so, first, thank you for that. Um, I did, actually, I apologize, I should have asked the applicant before, but, do you, applicant, have an estimate of how many residents or households would be, um, better served with this new tower?
Am I allowed to speak? Because the public is closed, public.
Yes.
So you, Will, you can speak?
Yes, applicant can answer.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, you can speak, it, it's. Um, the area used in the propagation map is a rough estimate of what we're gonna be covering, um, I don't know the exact number of households, um, but I can say from personal experience in that area visiting, I, it will significantly, uh, improve the coverage in that area. I could get, um, I could go back to AT&amp;T and get, uh, a rough, uh, a number estimate for you guys, and bring that forward to Jerry as well. During that, just.
Uh, that's okay, um, I just wanted to see if you had that off the top of your head, um, the maps, I know, are all really helpful, because, obviously, we're not outside, or really in our vehicles, so really having more indoor signal is just important, so thank you so much for that, and I look forward to a motion.
Okay. Would anybody else have any comments at this point in time on this item? Okay, hearing none, would anybody like to make a motion on this item at this time?
Just Commissioner Kano, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
Leo, second.
Okay, thank you. So we have Kano for first and Contreras Leo for second. With, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, will you take a roll call vote on this item?
Yes, Chair McLaughlin.
Aye.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Aye.
Commissioner Kano.
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Aye.
Commissioner Fan.
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera.
Aye.
Chair, motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay. Moving on, this is the time and place to consider item number two, conditional use permit number two zero two zero dash one two for a project located at thirty-three ninety South Bristol. Please note, discussion, decision on this matter is final unless appealed within ten calendar days. Before we begin, do any of the commissioners have anything they wish to disclose on this item at this point in time?
No.
Okay, thank you. So at this, at this time, Jerry, are you presenting this also?
That's correct, Chairman.
Okay, then Jerry, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairman. This next item is a request by Joey Li with Tate and Associates, representing Raising Claw. The applicant's requesting approval of conditional use permit twenty twenty dash twelve to allow us to sell beer and wine for onsite consumption at a new restaurant located at thirty-three ninety South Bristol Street. As proposed, the business will operate Monday to Sunday from ten AM to midnight and is now requesting an after-hours conditional use permit at this time. To the left is an arrow view of the subject property, which is located at the southwest corner of Bristol and Nelson Avenue. And the restaurant is located at the southwest corner of the shopping center, which is highlighted in red. The, the location is a shopping center that is anchored by Target and also has other commercial as well as restaurant uses that's similar to the proposed restaurant. To the right is the proposed floor plan of the restaurant, which will be able to accommodate approximately fifty-two patrons. The proposed alcohol storage and display area, which is highlighted in red, will be less than the allowable five percent of the total square footage of the restaurant. As proposed, the project complies with all of the San Antonio requirements that pertain to alcoholic beverages. The project is also consistent with nearby air, with nearby restaurants, which also offer similar ancillary uses, such as the sale of beer and wine. And as mentioned, is surrounded by primarily commercial uses. With that, staff is proposing conditions of approval that will assist in mitigating any impact to the general vicinity. And with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve conditional use permit number twenty twenty dash twelve as conditioned. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jerry. Do any of the commissioners have any questions of Jerry at this time?
Well, this is Commissioner Kano again. Just had a question about, in that area, I think, I believe Target is there. Is there a time that restaurants usually have for alcoholic beverages sold? Do we know that?
Commissioner Kano, most restaurants within this particular project site don't have a conditional use permit to operate past midnight. So to answer your question, most of these businesses do close at midnight. I'm not too sure what time Target closes, but that's probably the only major tenant that might close a little bit later.
Thank you. And for opening hours, is it also eight AM, twenty AM? Do you guys know? And to midnight? The average opening hours in that area?
Commissioner Kano, so the proposed applicant is going to operate from ten AM to twelve AM. But in terms of the San Antonio municipal code, they're allowed to open up at eight AM without needing to apply for an after-hours conditional use permit.
Thank you, Vince.
Okay, anyone else have a question of Jerry at this point in time? Okay, Jerry, thank you very much. Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item at this time?
Yes, one letter of support was received, and that letter has been distributed and is posted on our website.
Okay. Thank you. We will now open the public hearing. Does the applicant, is the applicant available? And does the applicant want to speak on this matter?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioner and Chair and staff. Thank you so much for being here tonight. My name's Joey Li with Tate and Associates. I'm here representing the applicant and property owner. So we just wanted to really thank you for being here tonight in light of everything that's going on in the world. And we are happy to accept all the commissions that are presented in the conditions of approval. And we appreciate staff for giving such a detailed presentation as well. And we're very grateful to provide any responses to any other questions.
Thank you, Joey. Does anyone have any questions of Joey at this point in time? Okay, no questions. Joey, you got it, you got off the hook easy. All right. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone else that would like to speak on this matter in the public hearing?
If you are participating by conference call and wish to speak, please press star nine now. I'll wait a few seconds before, to determine if we have anyone who would like to speak. No one has expressed a desire to speak. There are no other callers that would like to speak, Chair.
Okay, having heard that, the public hearing is now closed. We'll take it back to the commission for a final discussion and a vote. Do any of the commissioners have any statements they would like, any questions or comments they would like to make at this point in time?
Mr. Chair, I, I do. This is Contreras Leo.
Okay.
Out of curiosity, why was Hiccup so short-lived? It kind of went and came pretty quickly.
Yeah, I actually have Sky, who's the owner operator of the restaurant on the phone as well, on the line. He might be able to better elaborate on that. Sky, if you're, if you can hear me, he might just elaborate on that. You might have to unmute yourself.
Hello, Sky?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Yeah, because in the area, there's, there's a lot of Asian fusion restaurants. And we opened the, the concept, we signed the lease three years ago when the landlord only had us at the Asian in, in the plaza. But after we signed the lease, he signed another six, ten, which serving the same, similar food. So after we opened for five months, we didn't realize the right, right concept for the area. There are too many options. So we decided to open a seafood concept.
Okay. Well, thank you for doing that. You are missed. My kids miss you, but thank you for.
No, but, but we would, we will have some Hiccup items on, on the menu. Some like churros and milk tea and fudge and pate. We still have that on the menu, but we did add more of the seafood type of concept.
Oh, excellent. I asked the questions. I want to be sure that we're supportive of business. To succeed, but your breakdown of it is, is on point. I, I've seen that around that area as well, with a lot of the Asian fusion food. But thank you for answering the question.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sky. Thank you, Sophia. Does anyone else have a question from the commission? Okay, hearing none, what I have to do is take a, do we have a motion on this item at this point in time? I'd like to, Commissioner, I'd like to make a motion to approve ATP number twenty twenty dash twelve. Okay, the time of motion is, please eliminate your name. I would like a second. Okay, thank you for that second. So we have a first and a second. Moving forward, any last questions, any last comments any of the commissioners would like to make at this point in time?
Yeah, I, I'd like to make a comment. I, I, I appreciate seeing the renovations going on over in that area. And I think we recently approved that, the, the, one of the liquor licenses for, I think there's a restaurant, rather on the, I believe it's sushi. So it looks like it's doing well, and I'm just happy to see a renovation. So we're looking forward to pushing this through.
Great. Okay, thank you. Madam Secretary, can you roll call vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Kano.
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Aye.
Commissioner Fan.
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera.
Aye.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Aye.
And Chair McLaughlin.
Aye.
The motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Thank you, commission. Okay. At this point in time, we've taken care of our business calendar. And do we have any last comments by, the staff, does staff have any comments at this point in time?
I have one, sir. Vince, do we have any?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Just for the May eleventh meeting, we have three items on the agenda. Two are south side, and the third is the Bowery project, that you saw back in February as a study session item. Right, we are going to, we're going to be sending you tomorrow the Bowery final EIR, which is the draft EIR, the final EIR in response to comments and mitigation plan. You're going to get that tomorrow via link. And then you'll get the staff report either the end of this week or early next week. We're going to get it in two pieces, but we'll give you time to take a look at the environmental documents for that project. So be looking for the email from Sarah tomorrow afternoon sometime.
Okay, thank you, Vince. Any other staff comments at this moment? All right, hearing none, let's move on to commission comments. We're just, I'm just going to go down the list. Commissioner Kano, do you have any comments?
Uh, no comments at the moment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bressia.
None, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Nguyen.
I have no comment. Thank you.
Commissioner Fan.
None.
Commissioner Rivera. Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
So I think the next time we see each other, Mother's Day will have passed. So for those that are moms, and for your moms, and staff that are moms and their moms, I wish you a wonderful, happy Mother's Day. And definitely being with family is cherished these days. So I hope you all have a nice day.
Thank you for that, Contreras, thank you for that, Vice Chair Contreras Leo. I have no comments at this point in time. And I just want to thank everybody for being able to attend and join us today. And we did it in forty-five minutes. I think it's a new land record for us, land speed record for us. But thanks again for all your help and assistance on this. And with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting today for the next regular scheduled planning commission, which is scheduled for Monday, May eleventh, twenty twenty, at five thirty PM. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening and be safe.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, you as well.